But today, we're honoring a large number of Angelinos, literally tens of thousands, who walked on behalf of the victims of HIV and AIDS. This was the largest walk in the history of this event. Over $2.6 million was raised to fight this ugly disease. APLA was a recipient, and through their relentless efforts, they are helping beat this disease, and also helping the victims of this disease through food distribution, also educating young people on how to avoid AIDS. It's my great honor to have walked in the AIDS walk. It's my great honor to ride my bike in the AIDS ride every year. But really, the recipients today, and the rest of us, are really representing the tens of thousands of people who care about people who suffer, and in this case, suffer from AIDS and HIV. I'd like to now introduce Lisa Walters, who will call up the recipients. These are the groups that raised the most money by having the most people walk in the AIDS walk.
The first awards will be presented to this year's outstanding volunteers, a remarkable group of individuals who've displayed an extraordinary talent for giving. Each of these special people tirelessly gave of their time and their hearts to make the AIDS Walk a success. This year's outstanding volunteers in alphabetical order are Elaine Abraham. Elaine, please come up.
Yeah, there you go, thanks.
A little camera assistance there, thank you, Mayor. And Tony Stumpf, who was fantastic on the day of the walk. We would also like to honor this year's top fundraising walker, whose devotion to the cause has been a true inspiration. This year's top walker award goes to Cynthia Park, who set a new AIDS Walk record by raising You might want to know that over the last six years, Ms. Park has raised, herself has raised nearly a quarter of a million dollars for AIDS Project Los Angeles. The final group of awards are being presented to the top fundraising teams. Our first award is being presented to the top friends and family team. The team is called "In Memory of Clay Howell." With only 29 people on the team, this team raised over $32,000. Accepting the award are Mark Howell, Rich Ezra, and Susan Edelist. Our next award is being presented to the top small business team, Salon Paul Florent, which raised nearly $7,000 as a small business team, and accepting the award is team leader And friends. Thank you. The fifth place fundraising team award is being presented... I'll go ahead, okay. The fifth place team fundraising award is being presented to Team Warner. This is a coalition of companies, including Warner Brothers Studio, Warner Reprise Records, Warner Chappelle Records, and Home Box Office. This year, together, they raised $41,874. Accepting the award are Michael Fusky, Cheryl Fries, John Donahue, and Justina Walford. The fourth place fundraisers are the employees of the City of Los Angeles. Who raised $43,663. I'd like to present the award to you, Mr. Mayor. And the team leader was Tom Labange. I'd also like to invite any of the other City of Los Angeles team leaders who are here this morning to join us up front for a team photo. Any team leaders? Ah. The third place fundraisers are the employees of the County of Los Angeles. Little competition here?
Boo!
Oh, no. No, 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 no. The county worked hard. Accepting the award are Evelyn Gutierrez, Craig Hirakawa, and Quentin O'Brien. Yes? All right, the second place fundraising team is being presented to what is perennially a top team, the Disney Volunteers. This year, they raised $53,000. This year, they raised $53,885, and accepting the award is team leader Andrea Christopher Wolkady. And now, our first place fundraising team is DreamWorks SKG, which has been the top team since the company was founded. This year, the team raised an amazing $91,386. Accepting the award is team leader Cynthia Tucker and top fundraising walker Cynthia Park, who is on the DreamWorks SKG team. Thank you to all of our amazing fundraisers, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for support of the AIDS Walk.
Thanks, Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody who walked, everybody who gave money, and everybody who took time to come down and be part of the award ceremony. We do have a number of other presentations, but first, call the roll, please.
... so now, thank you. Now we are officially a meeting of the City Council on March 17, 2000. We are being viewed on Channel 35.
We are also being, if you want, you can listen to us on council phone, and of course, everybody is welcome in person if you can fit in this very crowded chamber. We're going to move now to Mr. Ridley Thomas for a presentation. If we can find him. He's here somewhere. Ah, there we are.
Madam President, members of the council, we take this opportunity to introduce to some and present to others a 25-year veteran of the Los Angeles Police Department in the person of Captain Paul Enox. Some of you may know and or appreciate in the 77th Division or as well as in South Bureau, the decision was made recently to decentralize the homicide units, and that's not only the case there, but other parts of the city as well. Through leadership and creativity, Captain Enox said that there are persons in this city who are committing crimes that oughtn't be tolerated, and put together a unit within the department there at 77th in particular to aggressively pursue what's known as career criminals who are engaged in homicides as well as a number of other malicious and criminal acts. And so today, we wish to salute his leadership as well as the unit that he commands, acknowledge the police protectively, particularly in his design for being involved in facilitating this opportunity to make these presentations. Captain Enox.
Thank you, and good morning. As we all know, right now, the Los Angeles Police Department is awash in a sea of negativity. I bring to you good news. Of the 9,600 men and women of the Los Angeles Police Department, the overwhelming majority of them do the job the right way, and I have the opportunity to present to you seven such individuals. In late 1998, when I became a commanding officer in the 77th area, in one six-day period, I was beset by 12 homicides, a rise in robberies, and a rise in violent assaults. Clearly, something had to be done. I handpicked a supervisor and six officers to work closely with detectives, particularly the detectives handling robberies, homicides, and violent assaults, to identify the most dangerous predators in 77th area and work on leads to bring these individuals to justice. I am proud to say that, in large part, due to their work, in 1999 homicides in the 77th area are down, robberies are down, and violent assaults are down. I thank these individuals as their commanding officer, but more importantly, as one of the 16% of Los Angeles police officers that actually live in the City of Los Angeles. I thank them as a Los Angeles resident, and most of all, I thank them for my aunts, uncles, nephews, nieces, and cousins that live in the 77th area. I want you to know that they made the streets safer, and during this period, they were not involved in any officer-involved shootings and no violent uses of force. I bring to you the good news that here are seven individuals that have done it the right way. They have not dishonored the City of Los Angeles, the residents of the City of Los Angeles, the Los Angeles Police Department, or themselves. I present to you these officers, starting with Sergeant Manny Pedrosa, Officer Marlo Cross, Officer Travis Lynch, Officer Michael Ventura, Officer Michael Martinez, Officer Chris Mason, and Officer Scott Cardy. I might also add, if Officers Cross, Ventura, and Mason will take one step forward, you will see from the decorations on their chests that they have also served their nation in the U.S. Armed Forces.
Madam President, members of the council, it's on behalf of the residents of the 77th Division and all of the council districts that it serves, that we take this opportunity to acknowledge these officers, and thank you for the opportunity to allow us to bring them before you this morning. Mr. President.
I'm sure we're going to have dancing later, but we're actually trying to do a little choreography over here at the moment. Mr. Ridley Thomas and I are jointly involved in the first presentation. I know you all think I'm wearing an Irish jacket here, but I want you to know this is an environment jacket. Later, it becomes an Irish jacket, in a few minutes. First, we would like to recognize today a very important group of people. They are important because they're not only people, they're government agencies, and I think it's important to remember that government agencies are made up of people. We have with us today the Los Angeles Urban Resources Partnership, somewhere here. Where are you guys? Yeah. These people are people who help us do a number of things all year long, and I'm putting on my glasses so I can make sure I don't miss any here. This is a partnership made up of the United States Forest Service, United States Natural Resources Conservation Service, Environmental Protection Agency, National Park Service, California Department of Conservation, the Antelope Valley Resources Conservation District, and the City of Los Angeles. And each of these agencies provides -- the partnership provides funding and technical assistance to community groups who are committed to improving the environment. And one of the things that we particularly like about this is that, for years, of course, we thought about the environment as forests and oceans and things that were not particularly urban, but the projects, the kinds of projects that they have helped to make possible include community gardens, neighborhood beautification, tree planting, public trails, environmental education, stream bank restoration, wetlands protection, greenway and parks development and restoration. And of course, we especially like it because the funding is provided by the federal government through the U.S. Department of Agriculture, to the Department of Agriculture to us, through the Forest Service and Natural Resources Conservation Service. The gentleman who oversees all of this is Undersecretary of the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Jim Lyons, who was very disappointed, actually, not to be able to be here today, but we do want to recognize him as well. The Urban Resources Partnership has awarded $1,849,768 and probably some change in over 100 grants over the past five years. They've just released their latest request for proposals to fund an additional $300,000 in grants. Community groups take note. The proposals are due May 5. And one of the steering committee members, Mike Rogers, has just retired from the U.S. Forest Service after 42 years of service to the people of the United States. So we have a lot of people here. I'm going to turn this over to my colleague, Mr. Ridley Thomas, who, as you know, chairs our Environmental Quality Committee, see if he has anything to say, and then we're going to hand out certificates to all of our wonderful people who have helped to make this partnership work.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. I simply want to say that both Ms. Galanter and I are now co-conspirators in an effort to save the environment. I'm an easy convert in that respect, and I suspect all of you are prepared to join up in that effort. I look at page after page of grants that have been awarded to community-based organizations in the City of Los Angeles, in all of the council districts that we represent. So we are simply here today to salute those who have been instrumental in making this happen, and we'll take this opportunity now to name them individually.
I think we're going to name them all first, and then we'll let Mike retire when we're done. I don't see any reason to let him retire first, even though my script says he's supposed to retire first. So, sorry, you'll have to wait a little bit longer. We have, first, you're going to get two today, Mike. We have Michael Rogers from the U.S. Department of Agriculture Forest Service.
Thank you very much.
Wearing an appropriately green shirt.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Don't go too far, because we'll let you retire when we're done here. Rudy Retamoza is from the Forest Service as well.
Congratulations.
Thank you. See, it's like high school graduation. You do the diploma.
Dun, 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 dun.
Yeah, there you go. All right, you sing, and I'll do the -- Kristen Kieferand is from the Department of Agriculture, Agriculture Natural Resources Conservation Service. Kristen, I hope I pronounced that close to right. Rich Campbell is also from the Natural Resources Conservation Service.
Thank you.
Sir, thank you for your help. No, it only goes on for another hour. Just hold on. Yovida Pajarillo, if I said that right, is from EPA. Did I say it pretty close?
Yovida Pajarillo.
Thank you so much. A very Irish person, yes.
Very Irish.
Rita Bickel's not on my thing, is Rita Bickel? She couldn't make it here. That's why she's not on my list.
An absentee of Rita.
Peg Henderson from the U.S. Department of the Interior, National Park Service. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your help. Chelsea Cochran is from the Urban Resources Partnership. She's the executive director.
Yes.
Runs the show. We might have to let you say something here. Somebody's got to do the work, after all. And Melinda Bartlett from our very own Environmental Affairs Department.
Thank you.
And I think we should take note of Lillian Kawasaki, the head of our Environmental Affairs Department. Did you wanted to say something? Be my guest.
On behalf of the Undersecretary of Agriculture, who I spoke to this morning, Jim Lyons, because this is really his experiment, that government at all levels can work together with the community to make Los Angeles a better place to live. Just want to say he's sorry he's not here. He wants to thank the City of Los Angeles for acknowledging this partnership and to congratulate all the steering committee members. And I just want to remind everybody, the $300,000 is there. Please apply May 5. Thank you.
Should they call? Who do they call?
We actually gave all of the application copies to the council offices and hope that you will help us get the word out, but they should contact Chelsea Cochran.
Okay. Now, Chelsea, before I let you do your commercial, I have for you a --
Okay.
No, don't go away.
Okay.
We want you to do a commercial. A certificate of appreciation to the Los Angeles Urban Resources Partnership. So you'll have to hang on to that one, too. And now you may do your commercial.
As others have said before me, I just want to make sure that community groups out there know that the money is available, and please send in a request for proposal if you need one. Give me a call at area code 213-580-1055. I'm sure that I will momentarily be deluged with calls, but that's all right. That's what we want. We want to get as many good ideas for environmental projects as possible within the city, because we want to give this money away to a good cause. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. And now, Mike, we want to also thank you on behalf of the city, again, not just for your work on this, but for 42 years of work helping to make the forests --
Two years.
It's almost as old as you are, right? For helping to keep the forests growing and working, and I hope that as you retire from the Forest Service, you're going to go out and enjoy them.
I am. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, instead of going in the back, where's my Ontario?
They're here.
Okay. All right. All right, we're taking a picture, then we're going to do another environment thing, and then we'll turn Irish. Thank you, Mr. President. One more. As you know, we are very proud in the City of Los Angeles of our record as environmental leaders. Thank you. And it is my pleasure today to recognize a crew of people from Ontario Airport, which, as you recall, is our airport, one of our airports. This is a Good Earthkeeping Award, even though it's not quite Earth Day, but it's coming. And it is my very great pleasure to recognize the really splendid efforts of the Ontario Airport Recycling Program. It's a comprehensive airport-wide recycling program in three phases. They started with a mixed paper recovery program. The second phase is in each terminal and in the maintenance yard, and the third phase is targeted toward the aircraft and the tenant offices. I hope everybody's taking note. You can do this, too. Phase one began in July of last year in the airport's administrative offices. Since they've started the program, over 2,200 pounds of mixed paper have been recycled per week. I shudder to think how much that means has been recycled altogether, but it's all that stuff that didn't get thrown in the garbage. Close to 60% of the paper is being diverted through the administrative offices. Starting in November, Ontario began a mixed paper recycling program for the passengers, the ticket counters, the concession areas, and the terminal offices. And they're also grass cycling, or grass claiming, whatever we call it. Composting is basically what they're doing. And they anticipate about 300 tons of grass clippings per year will be recycled. In Phase Three, they're just about to begin, so we may have to have them back next year. The airport recycles 300 tons of greenery, 100 tons of cardboard, 55 tons of mixed paper, 45 tons of pallets, 36 tons of nonferrous metal, and is that a 3 or a .3 tons of aluminum per year? The City of Ontario is a partner in this. It works better when you have partners. They donated a recycling container trailer, and we're -- the airport has now reached a 40% diversion rate by last October. They expect to reach 55% diversion by the end of this year. And -- And what this means is that they're doing a great job. They serve nine major commercial airlines. They are just about to become a genuinely international airport with flights from Ontario to Ontario, the other Ontario. And we're very proud of them. And they have plenty of room to grow, and they're going to grow responsibly. So it is my very great pleasure to present this award, a Good Earthkeeping Award, for efforts beyond the call of... Well, I don't know if it's beyond the call of duty, but we appreciate it all the same, to the Ontario International Airport Recycling Program. I have here with me Jens Rivera, who is the newly appointed airport manager at Ontario, Bob Gluck, the division head for maintenance at Ontario, and Bob Haynes, maintenance supervisor who spearheaded the program. And there's some more people out there. I knew there weren't that many bodies behind me.
Maria Tesoro.
Maria Tesoro from Public Affairs, and Phil DePoyen from Central Government Affairs. So, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to award you a Good Earthkeeping Award. And which of you would like to accept it?
Thank you very much. On behalf of Los Angeles World Airports and Ontario Airport, we're very pleased to receive this, and we hope you enjoy the goodie bags from Ontario Airport that we distributed up there, and to remind you that there is a beautiful airport east of here run by the City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
I do want you to know that I use that windscreen. I got one from your predecessor, Pete Drinkwater, and I use my Ontario Airport sun protector in the car every time I park at LAX. So, I used to have a Palmdale one, but it got destroyed in the flood. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to all of you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Fuhr, did you have an introduction? Mr. Fuhr, did you have an introduction?
Yes, I do. I'd like to ask Karen Wagner and the delegation from the Tel Aviv-L.A. Partnership to stand, please. We can recognize you. Karen is, of course, our city volunteer coordinator and is here with a number of individuals from Tel Aviv in Israel who are participants in the Tel Aviv-Los Angeles Partnership, which was formed to promote closer relationships between Israel and the United States, Tel Aviv and Los Angeles. And already from our meetings this morning, we were discussing promoting deeper ties on environmental issues, on social justice and legal aid issues, and we welcome you here to the city of Los Angeles and look forward to a continuing promotion of ties between our two countries and our two cities. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Fuhr. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilman O'Holden to begin our St. Patrick's Day festivities here in the city council of the city of Los Angeles.
Happy St. Patrick's Day. Let the parade begin.
Thank you for all your help.
Always.
Good, good.
It's such a pleasure to have you.
And was I properly introduced? Did the president of the council say Nate O'Holden?
Yeah.
All right. And once again, Happy St. Patrick's Day, and we welcome you to the 124th Annual Irish Day Ceremony in City Hall. Another big round of cheers. This morning, we want to say welcome and thank you for... To Robert McGinnis. And the Irish Fair Foundation for their continued contribution to the festivities we enjoy annually as we celebrate Irish and Irish-American culture. I would like to have one of my Irish saying here today. May those who love us, love us. And those that don't love us, may God turn their hearts. And if he doesn't turn their hearts, may he turn their ankles, so that we will know them by their limping. It's my pleasure, and always, to present my friend and the friend of the Irish community and of the city of Los Angeles, Robert McGinnis. And let the program begin.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Happy St. Patrick's Day to you. Thank you. Now, I'd like to ask the Emo Pipe Band to come in.
Say thank you, O'Holden.
Oh, thank you, O'Holden. Yes, yes. Most definitely.
Thank you, Steve. And now may I introduce Father Sean Brazel of the Columbian Society to say the invocation.
I'm a real Irishman. Born and raised in Dublin and Ireland. I spent the last... I spent 27 years working in Korea and the last 10 years here in the Los Angeles area with the Korean immigrants. I'd like to say a few words, I told to be very brief, but I'll be as brief as possible, that the life and the growth of Los Angeles is deeply enriched by the diversity of its population, an amazing mix of the immigrant stocks from which this city continues to grow. And we Irish often refer to Ireland as the Ireland of the welcomes. And I'd like to say, while that's very true, that America has always been the country of the welcomes, and the Statue of Liberty is a great sign of that. America has opened its doors to the poor and the broken of the nations of the world. And at the time of the Great Famine, the poor starving people of Ireland were made welcome. And many of those present here in these chambers today are the descendants of those immigrants. Their children and grandchildren were to become leaders of the political, military, education, and church fields of America. Today, we will honor here at the City Hall the Irishman and Irishwoman of the year 2000 and eight other outstanding Irish-American honorees. All of these people are outstanding examples of Irish-American fellowship and friendship. All over the world today, millions of people celebrate St. Patrick's Day. Who was Patrick? It's one of God's little jokes that Patrick was born in England and was kidnapped by the Irish and worked as a slave minding sheep for a number of years. And after escaping from his captors, he became a priest and then a bishop. And in a dream, he heard that the people of Ireland called him to return and walk with them. He returned and spent the rest of his life introducing Christianity to the Irish. There are many myths about Patrick, that he drove out snakes. I'm sure the politicians in this room will forgive me if I say the only real snakes ever in Ireland were the modern-day politicians. There are many... That's not Los Angeles now. There are many miracles attributed to Patrick and the shamrock stories. And in reply to some of these myths, I'd like to say that it's no coincidence that Patrick's Day falls around the time of your Oscars and Easter Bunny, because many of the stories seem more suited to Disneyland than to missionary Ireland of the 5th century. And I think the good Lord must be laughing at the audacity of the Irish as they parade and sing and dance and drink the day away. Patrick will surely catch hell tonight at the heavenly cocktail party. I'd like to finish with an old Irish blessing for the city council and all those present here today. May the power of God uphold you. His wisdom guide you. His hand guard you. His pat lie before you, and his shield protect you as you journey today and throughout your life. And to this old Irish blessing, I'd like to add one line myself. May the smog never cloud your deliberations. And God be with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. Thank you very much, Father. Kay Millie Falsian, a Happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody. I'm Robert E. McGinnis, and I'm chairman of the Civic Day Ceremonies, and I want to welcome everybody here. I'd like to thank everyone. I'd like to thank the mayor, if he's around. I'd like to thank Madam President Galanter, of course, Nate O'Holden, our Irishman on the board, and all the members of the city council. These events are sponsored by the Irish Fair Board. Now, the Irish Fair sponsors many activities. The first and foremost, of course, are the Civic Day Ceremonies. The next is the Irish Fair that's going to be held on June 18th and 19th at Santa Anita. That is a great event. I'd like to ask everyone kindly put it on your calendar. It's going to be a great event, and we'd like to have you there. This year, we added a second fair, and that's going to be in Orange County at Costa Mesa, at the Costa Mesa Fairgrounds. And that's going to be September 30th and October 1st. So why don't you put down both dates and make both events? I'm sure that you'll enjoy it. Also, we'd like to say that we're sponsored here by the Rosa Trolley Committee, and we have a class of young candidates with us, one of whom will go to Ireland, and she'll be chosen tomorrow night. Now, tomorrow night, we're going to have the St. Patrick's Day Rosa Trolley Dinner Dance at the Biltmore. I'm proud to say that it sold out, but it's going to be quite an event, and we'd like to ask everyone to please put it on your calendar for next year. Could I ask the roses to kindly stand up for just a moment? And the rose committee, okay? She can do it again. And now I would like to ask Bill Hackett to come forward and to read the Easter Proclamation. I'd like to tell everyone that the Easter Proclamation now is equivalent to the American Declaration of Independence. So keep that in mind. Bill Hackett, please come forward.
Poblach Naharan, the provisional government of the Irish Republic to the people of Ireland. Irishmen and Irishwomen, in the name of God and of the dead generations from which she receives her old tradition of nationhood, Ireland through us summons her children to her flag and strikes for her freedom. Having organized and trained her manhood through her secret revolutionary organization, the Irish Republican Brotherhood, and through her open military operations, the Irish volunteers and the Irish Citizen Army, having patiently perfected her discipline, having resolutely waited for the right moment to reveal itself, she now seizes that moment, and supported by her exiled children in America and by gallant allies in Europe, but relying in the first on her own strength, she strikes in full confidence of victory. We declare the right of the people of Ireland to the ownership of Ireland and to the unfettered control of Irish destinies, to be sovereign and indefeasable. The long usurpation of that right by a foreign people and government has not extinguished the right, nor can it ever be extinguished, except by the destruction of the Irish people. In every generation, the Irish people have asserted their right to national freedom and sovereignty. Six times during the past 300 years, they have asserted it in arms. Standing on that fundamental right, and again asserting it in arms in the face of the world, we hereby proclaim the Irish Republic as a sovereign, independent state, and we pledge our lives and the lives of our comrades in arms to the cause of its freedom, of its welfare, and of its exaltation among all nations. The Irish Republic is entitled to, and hereby claims the allegiance of every Irishman and Irishwoman. The Republic guarantees religious and civil liberty, equal rights, and equal opportunities to all its citizens, and declares its resolve to pursue the happiness and prosperity of the whole nation and all of its parts, cherishing all the children of the nation equally and oblivious of the differences carefully fostered by an alien government which have divided a minority from the majority in the past. Until our arms have brought the opportune moment for the establishment of a permanent national government representative of the whole people of Ireland and elected by the suffrages of all her men and women, the provisional government hereby constituted will administer the civil and military affairs of the Republic in trust for the people. We place the cause of the Irish Republic under the protection of the Most High God, whose blessing we invoke upon our arms, and we pray that no one who serves that cause will dishonor it by cowardice, inhumanity, or reprieve. In the supreme hour, the Irish nation must, by its valor and discipline and by the readiness of its children, to sacrifice themselves for the common good, prove itself worthy of the august destiny to which it is called. the august destiny to which it is called. Signed on behalf of the provisional government, Thomas J. Clark, Sean McDermott, Patrick Pierce, James Connolly, Thomas McDonagh, Eamon Count, and Joseph Plunkett.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to remind you of something. Those names that were read that signed the Easter Proclamation, within the next 10 days, they were all shot. So I just want to tell you that. They really did pledge their lives. At this time, I'd like to thank Evan McGrath for the music. I'm going to also thank Joan Kelly and the Kelly School of Dance, who will introduce them later on. And at this point, I'd like to introduce the president of the Irish Fair, Terence Anderson. Thank you, Bob McGinnis. I would like to first start, if we could have just a moment of silence, a prominent family in the Irish community, Matt and Mary Flynn. His mother passed away. Most of us have met and know his mother very well, and she's being buried just as we meet here today. So if we just can bow our heads one brief moment for Ann Flynn. I would like at this time to invite the councilman Nate O'Holden. And I want to thank Councilman O'Holden for being our sponsor for many, many years here at City Hall and for all the Irish activities that take place in this city. Councilman O'Holden has truly been a real and true friend of the Irish, as well as a descendant from the Emerald Isle. Thank you, councilman. With Councilman O'Holden present, I would like to introduce a very distinguished and honored guest present here today, the Minister of State for the Republic of Ireland, Noel Deveron, who is here with his wife Anne Marie, and the Vice Counsel for the Irish Government, Neve Ryan. I'd like to introduce them to come forward.
Dismergiv galair, ta anais armche vahnu. Livshed, ne. Agus, tam buirt das can kuda, shur furshe dumsa. It is appropriate to speak our own Gaelic language on St. Patrick's Day. And I want to congratulate everybody for taking part here. And I'm sorry that Father Brazel, you know, when he referred to the Irish politicians as being snakes. That it's a pity he's been so long away, because if he came back, he'd find that we're doing exactly the example America gave us. We're now taking immigrants into our economy and welcoming them there, very much into a worthwhile economy today. So Father, check up a little more on it. I'd just like to say very sincere thanks, and I hope that the first St. Patrick's Day parade of Los Angeles City will be a big one, it'll be a proud one. But thank you for everybody for sharing that tradition with us. Thank you very much.
Minister, I'd like to present, on behalf of the Irish Fair Foundation, a book on the Irish in California: Historic Benevolent Romantic, written by Patrick Darling, a great Irishman out of San Francisco who passed away last year, but not until he finished his book cataloguing the great deeds of the Irish in California. Thank you for being here. I would now like to introduce the Rosa Trali for Southern California, Kerry O'Connell. I'd like to present her a resolution honoring her for her outstanding year as the Southern California Rosa Trali, the ambassador of the Irish community to all of Southern California. Thank you, Kerry, for an outstanding year.
Good morning, City Council, Councilman Nate O'Holden, and the Los Angeles community. Thank you to each one of you who have come out on this St. Patrick's Day to show your support for the Irish culture and tradition. Over the course of the last year, I was given the unique opportunity to represent Southern California as the 1999 Rose of Trali. It has been an honor and a privilege to bear the title of one of Ireland's most beloved stories. Ireland is famous for its rich oral tradition, and it is remarkable that legends and fairytales of the past can still play a role in the future. The Rose of Trali is a one-of-a-kind event for young women of Irish ancestry to become more aware of their Irish heritage and culture. Women between the ages of 18 and 25 are invited to participate in a month of events which range from garden parties to pub nights to heritage days to interviews. The selection concludes tomorrow night on March 18th, when the new rose will be chosen. I am very proud and very excited to introduce to the community and the City Council this year's rose class for the new millennium. Please stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Kerry. Thank you, Kerry, for a wonderful year. Now, I would like to ask Kathy Hughes to come forward to accept the annual Irish Day Civic Ceremony. If I might note, this is the 125th one, councilman. I think we did you a disservice in our paperwork, but the Irish Civic Day Ceremony started in 1877 and have continued every year in the council chambers of the Los Angeles City Hall. Kathy, if you'd come forward. And now, I would like to present the honorees who are being honored. Irish men and women who have given a great of their time and their effort, Irish and Irish-Americans, to help Los Angeles become a better community. I would note, the selections are made on one of three bases. Either the person has been very active and contributed greatly to the Irish organizations in the community, or the person through their avocations, their career, their positions, have worked very hard and accomplished great things, be it in little ways or big ways, and reflect greatly on the Irish-American community, or persons through their celebrity status have contributed greatly to their Irish-Americans everywhere. Now, we'll introduce our honorees. Teresa LeBlanc, an Irish stepdancing teacher. Let's have a round of applause for Teresa. John McCarthy, a O'Keefe's Religious Goods who is known throughout the entire Irish community for his tireless effort at promoting Ireland in every way possible. John McCarthy. Antoinette Craddy, the founder of the Santa Barbara Irish Festival and one of the most prominent, most active leaders of the Irish community in Southern California. Antoinette. Thank you, Antoinette. Jean Jones. Jean is the wife of the Irish Fair treasurer Larry Jones. Jean is one of the unsung heroes of the Irish Fair, because she's always behind the scenes doing all of the little things that need doing. We don't ever want to forget our unsung heroes, because without them, all the glory can't be accomplished. Jean Jones. Dennis Garvey is a man who has, I think, a singular vision in his life, and that vision is concern America, to help the people in the Third World countries. I'd have to say he's one of the most dedicated and committed persons I've ever known, who is totally self-effacing, who doesn't want any glory, and we practically had to beg him to come down here to receive this award, and I think he's one of the most distinguished and honored people that we have the privilege of knowing. Dennis Garvey. A lady of small stature, but great status and great accomplishments. I'd like to introduce Elizabeth McCallan, who is an assistant editor of the Tulucon Times, and really is doing everything she can to promote the Irish and to promote the Tulucon Lake part of the valley with all her heart and all her soul. Let's hear it for Elizabeth. Our next honoree is a man who needs no introduction among the younger crowd, and if he had his band here today, we'd be all doing our jigs and reels every which way, even in the council chambers. I'd like to introduce the man who founded and is, I think, the key man of the band called the Fenians, and this fellow is no other than Terry Casey. Except that we're running out of time, and there's a parade waiting us. I think we'd asked Terry to sing a song, you know? Our next honoree is a Irish Fair, member of the Irish Fair Board of Directors, who has been contributing his time to the reenactment groups, to the operations of the fair. He seems to work every angle, not every angle, that's the wrong way to put it. God, you think I was talking about grift, fellas? He seems to work every part of the fair, and he does an outstanding job. One of our key board directors, Vern Kriske. Thank you, Vern. Last but not least, on our honorees, is a man who's been around the Irish community longer than me, and even though I may not be as old as Methuselah, I've been around it a long time. This fellow has been contributing ever since day one, and he still is contributing. When you need a car, you need this, you need that, whatever you need, music, accordions, cars, you can count on Joe Courtney, and Joe Courtney will be there to help anybody, everybody, anytime, anywhere, anyplace. Let's honor Joe Courtney. We are very fortunate today to have two young ladies from Ireland, both of them very accomplished. They both are involved with the International Festival Kerry and Rosa Trali Committee. They are the new breed of the new Ireland. The Ireland that is very accomplished, is known as the Celtic Tiger, that has the best economy in all of Europe and maybe all of the world. In fact, such so great an economy that I'm ready to write my cousins, who 30 years ago I would send them blunders and that and say, would you mind sending them back? Ireland has become a great nation, a great country economically, which is only fitting for a great people, that the Irish are. Part of this new generation is Noreen Cassidy, who is one of the most accomplished and recognized businesswomen in Ireland, despite her young age, and has taken it upon herself to become the chief executive officer of the International Festival Kerry, which is a multimillion-dollar operation, nonprofit, as it is, and she has turned it into, she's turning it into a festival that is fit for the 21st century. I'd like to now invite Noreen Cassidy to come forward and receive a plaque. And with her is Brita Walsh, the Finance Chairman of the 21st Century Rosa Trali Festival.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, fellow roses. I bid you greetings from Trali here today on behalf of all the members of the International Rosa Trali Committee, which was formed 42 years ago. And in reality, it was formed, in some respects, through a very small town. Trali has a population of around 18,000 people, and it was formed at a time when the economy in Ireland hadn't got as much tourism, and certainly down near Kerry hadn't got the infrastructure in which it needed in order to promote tourism. Forty-two years later, the Rose of Trali is now Ireland's premier event. It's the top TV program, and we attract in excess of 200,000 people to the town of Trali, which turns into roughly about 20 million Irish punts into the local economy down there, which is extremely important. And Terry's totally right, the economy in Ireland is absolutely booming at the moment. But in paying tribute to yourselves today, that's in no short change for the way in which Irish America has supported Ireland, and in particular, the Rosa Trali Festival, back down through the last 40 years. And I'd like to thank the Irish Fair Foundation for inviting me here today and for inviting Brita as well. And we've been absolutely amazed since arriving on Wednesday with the strength and the commitment that the Irish Fair Foundation have to the Rose of Trali. So we'd like to pay tribute to them. We're looking forward to a very good parade today and also to our event tonight, and we look forward to welcoming the Southern California Rosa Trali to Ireland in August, and we're sure that she'll serve you proud. Thank you and good afternoon.
I will let you know that anyone who hasn't been to the Rosa Trali Festival ought to go, because it's six days of all day and all night carrying on. You're doing all these official things in the day, but they don't let you go to bed from the dancing and the partying and what all until, I think the earliest I made it last year was 4:30 one morning, and it was 6:30 the last day. And I'm talking about AM. So it's a festival worth going. At this time, I'd like to turn the program over to Alan Anderson.
City Council President, council members, all you Irish folks out there, and if there's anyone else, Happy St. Patrick's Day to you all. This is truly an honor for me. I actually asked if I could make this presentation. It's a little bit unusual, and you'll understand here in a moment why. The first thing I would like to do is invite Mary Ann Murphy up here to the dais as the Irishwoman for the year 2000. Mary Ann? Mary Ann, Mary Ann has contributed for the last, oh, I don't know, 200 years. Every event, every fundraiser, anytime you needed help, Mary Ann was there. When I first got involved, she made sure I paid my way into all these dances. She is currently the Secretary of Ireland's Own Social Ireland's own social club in Alhambra, and she has really contributed, and when it came up for a discussion of who should be the Irishwoman of the Year, someone said, "Mary Ann Murphy", and everyone else went, "Yeah, my god, yes." And it was unanimous right then. I mean, we didn't really get into a vote. So, there goes Bob Shalali. So, with that, I'd like to present this to Mary Ann Murphy, and thank you for all the years that you've contributed to make all these events so successful. Thank you.
Irish rose, the dearest flower that grows. You may search everywhere, but none can compare with my wild, oh, Irish rose, my old Irish rose, the sweetest flower.
You might like to know that Ms. Murphy is a retired city employee, worked here for 40 years, and she's been retired for 18 years. All right, give her another big hand. Truly the Woman of the Year.
Thank you for the opportunity to thank the Irish Fair Committee and our City Council, and I especially want to thank my husband, John Murphy, and my children that are here. Without him, I couldn't receive the award. Thank you.
This next award for the Irishman of the Year 2000 goes to my brother, Terrence Anderson. Before I invite Terry to come up here, I would like to say that for the last 30 years, I think it's actually been more, Terry has been hauling me and a lot of other people into doing things that we thought were impossible. Years ago, back in the late 60s, early 70s, we were working on the Irish Games Committee. I was mopping floors and serving beer. We got involved with a crazy idea of putting on an Irish fair. Today, after we have the 25th year of the Irish Fair in Los Angeles, it has become the biggest event on the West Coast. He then wasn't satisfied with that. He started out with the St. Patrick's Day Ball. It has become the biggest event. Then, the Rosa Trulie presentation, that has just sparkled and is one of our jewels. So, we thought, "Okay, we can rest now." Oh, no. He turned around, said, "We're gonna do an Orange County Irish Fair. Those poor folks down there are deprived. They need to have some Irishness." So, this year, we went off, or last year, we went off to Orange County. Forgive me with the orange, but we went down to Orange County and put on what turned into a grand success and looks to be one of the, another crown jewel for us. With that, I'd like to invite Terry up here. Terry has actually been the spearhead of all these events, helping us select the Irishman and Woman of the Year and the honorees, and this is his time in the sun. After all these years, we want to present Terry as the Irishman of the Year 2000, and I just can't help but think what we have facing us in the new century. Terry?
I just want to say thank you. Thank you, Alan. Thank you, the Irish Fair Board of Directors. When I informed Mary Ann Murphy that she was the Irishwoman of the Year 2000, I said, "You know, Mary Ann, you're lucky. The Irish Fair Board was unanimous in their decision for you, but they weren't for me." So, I think, maybe I'm pushing them with too much work, but I will say, going back over these 30 years or so, Alan's much older than me, as everyone knows, that I remember with the first fairs we started, we had them at Devonshire Downs, then we moved to Notre Dame High School, and back in those days, the fair every year was growing by 20 or 30 percent. But it was a lot of work in those days for us, the kind of work you don't, we don't even think of anymore. At Notre Dame, on the Monday morning after, the whole Board of Directors was out there picking up cigarette butts in the grass, because we promised to return it exactly as it was, and we didn't have the kind of money to go hire anybody to do that. Now, the Irish Fair has become the preeminent Irish outdoor festival in Western America. It's at Santa Anita Park Racetrack, and this year, we have Frank Patterson. I think many of you, all of you, have heard of him, a famous Irish dinner. We have The Phineons, and we have The Young Dubs, but it's our pride and joy, and I take great, I'm very pleased to have been part of this. I want to thank, think of my grandfather, who I never met, and my grandmother, who were from Ireland, and my grandfather, we heard this through, my mom used to say, "Oh, where he came from, it was 'the sea before you and the mountains to your back.'" Well, one day, I got to Morane, and it was exactly as he described, with the sea before you and the mountains behind your back. And I've been to Morane probably 25 times since then, and I feel like my cousins there are my best friends. That only enhanced my feeling for Ireland and for all things Irish. But one thing our grandparents taught us through our mother, and my father's family taught us through him, is our heritage is the most important thing to us, and our Irish heritage is the most important thing to us. There's only one thing that's more important. We're pleased that they found and came to a new land called America, because America is the welcome and the prosperity and the hope for everyone in the world. For the last many years, Councilman O'Holden has been helping us and supporting us and doing whatever we would ask. I'd like to present him. These are new off-the-press Irish Fair Foundation pins with the number of them. Councilman, thank you for your many years of support, and I hope many years more. Thank you very much, Councilman NATO Holden. Thank you, Alan, Terry. And now, I would like to ask, you know, we've spoke about the fair and all that. I'd like to ask the Board of Directors and any ambassadors that are here of the fair to kindly stand up, please. Throw money. Thank you. Thank you very much. And now, I would like to ask Joan Kelly of the Kelly School of Dancing to kindly come forward and to show us some wonderful Irish dancing. Thank you. And what I would like to do right now, speaking of thanking, is, be ready, I want to thank the City Council. I want to thank the people of the City of Los Angeles once again. Councilman NATO Holden, I want to thank you very much for having us here. And I want to end with my traditional Erin Gobrah and God Bless America, and thank you very, very much. Piper, pipe us away.
Okay, the next item.
Approval in the minutes.
All right, Mr. Savornich moves, and Mr. Ridley Thomas seconds. If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote. Mr. Savornich?
Mr. President, with your permission and the indulgence of the council, could we take ordinance item number 10 out of order, please?
Why don't we take 2, 3, 4, and 10?
Take all of them.
And those are ordinances. Any specials by the council members? If not, prepare the roll on 2, 3, 4, and 10. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Fourth with on all those ordinances. Next item?
Item number 11, a request that this matter be continued until March 31st.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item 16, a request that matter be continued until March 29th.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote.
Item number 1 is an item notice for public hearing.
Is there anybody in the audience who wants to be heard on item 1? If not, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion on item number 1? Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll on item number 1. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Mr. President, items number 5 through 9 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held.
Any specials by council members, 5 through 9? Any specials? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item?
Items number 12 through 15 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Anybody in the audience wants to be heard on any of those items? We do not have any cards. Anybody want to be heard on any of those items?
Yeah.
Saying that the public hearing is closed. Any specials by council members? 12 through 15? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item?
Item number 17 on the continuation agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Any discussion on item 17?
I want to call a special, Mr. President.
Okay, that's our only special, so start talking.
Okay. Mr. President, members of council, I don't know if someone's here from the police department, and if not, we could continue it.
We got Harry. Harry's...
Harry's saying the representative should be walking through the door any minute now. But, and if not, I don't have a problem with continuing it until the next council meeting.
Mr. President, there's also a special one on this that you wish to hold.
They're on their way.
Okay, then, Mike, we have another item, a special.
Mr. President, a special one not on the agenda is a motion presented by Ms. Kowski Fuhr. Findings need to be made?
We discussed this with the city attorney. The city attorney concurred that there was, the need to act arose after the posting of the Agenda 4 today. This morning, the Police Commission had a special meeting at which they indicated that they wanted to clarify and confirm that the police department must comply and comport with the codes of law in terms of providing all necessary information to the district attorney in terms of the investigation as it relates to Rampart and all other matters, and that, while there has been some discussion and concern, and we've seen far too much of it in the news of late, the Police Commission asserted its role to direct the chief and the department to comply fully, and that there shall be no change in this policy without coming forward to the Police Commission for any discussion and a commission determination that the policy should be changed. I think it's appropriate for the council to immediately act, to inform the public of the council's support of this position in the same manner, and that's what special one is about, a council confirmation of the action today of the Police Commission.
Okay, let's vote on the findings. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
The matter is before us. Now, Mr. Fuhr, you want to be heard?
Yes, as to the merits of the motion, Mr. President, colleagues, I want to rise in strong support of this motion. I concur strongly with Ms. Kowski that it's important for us in the city, especially city leaders right now, to be standing together with one voice, making clear that a dispute between parties in government on this issue is simply intolerable. We cannot allow this kind of dispute to imperil the fundamental goals of the investigation that is underway right now, and those fundamental goals obviously boil down to rooting out the problem, assuring those who committed misconduct are brought to justice, and restructuring the police department. That's what this, our focus ought to be. That's what this, our focus ought to be. And in that light, I think that the commission's action is deserving of unanimous city council endorsement, so that we can collectively convey to the electorate we represent that we have one cause and one goal, and will not allow ourselves to be distracted by anything other than the fundamental purpose for which the Rampart investigation was initiated.
Mr. Wax?
I just wanted to ask Ms. Zakowski, I like the way this is worded, particularly in the first paragraph of your resolve, that it says "on all matters of policy," to make it clear that this is not just on this one issue of the role of the department and the prosecutors, but that it is basically on all policy matters, prior policy matters, that they can't be deviated from without being the consultation of the commission and the commission playing its role. So I want to stress that it means what it says here.
Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also rise in support of this motion, and just wanted to recognize that Councilmember Ms. Zakowski and I had actually discussed the possibility of submitting a similar motion on Wednesday, and preceding the police commission in this type of action to direct the police chief to coordinate and cooperate with the DA and all other law enforcement entities. And we consciously agreed that we would allow the police commission to make the first step with respect to the process that we've outlined in the city of Los Angeles in the last couple of years. I'm glad to see they followed through with that. I'm glad to see that it came to the results that we were hoping for, and I'm glad to see that we're going to reaffirm this today here in the city council.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, I'm going to support the motion, but I don't want to leave the impression that the police chief is not doing his job. The evidence that's been gathered thus far and submitted to the DA and to the US Attorney was done by the police department under the supervision of the chief. Now, I just remind you, not too many years ago, there was an incident called Rodney King, and that information was gathered by then-chief Daryl Gates and submitted to the district attorney's office. But we all know what the results was. Although it was tried in state court...
Cindy?
Nothing really happened until it got to the US court. Now, I don't want to get involved in what's going on, except to say that everything that's done investigative-wise has got to be confidential. There's been too much discussion about leaking. Who's going to take the responsibility for that? Because there is a lot of leaking of evidence. And to the extent that some police officers who should be tried for their misconduct will walk because of leaking of evidence, and then when it's, in the final analysis, if you don't get the convictions, what they'll say is that the chief or the police department didn't do his job. They'll always have somebody to try to kick around. I don't think we should do that. No longer should we be divisive. The people hurting the most are the people of the city, of this city. This divisiveness must stop, and stop now. And I think that we here, too, must stop, and stop now, if the politics are being introduced into this issue. The city of Los Angeles cannot afford to make this a political issue. It'll go on and destroy us as a community. It'll continue to be divisive. So I would say, yes, I'll vote for this. It's like voting for motherhood and apple pie. I have nothing wrong with that. I haven't heard the chief say anything contrary to what's in this motion that he has not been doing. It's my understanding that the evidence has been submitted to the district attorney's office, and now we're awaiting indictment. And the indictment should come the sooner the better, so that this issue can be behind us. Let's take it off the front page of LA Times, in fact, Daily News. Let's take it out of the newspaper, out of the media altogether, and put it where it belongs, with the police department and this thorough investigation, with the district attorney, and let them indict on those cases where he feel he has jurisdiction. And if, when he doesn't, let it go to the US Attorney, where we know we will get a positive result as well. Thank you.
Paul Burton?
Yes, I think the whole matter has raised a concern that has been kind of in and undercurrent for some time, not just even recently, and precedes this whole situation with Rampart. And that is, what does it actually mean to say in the charter that the commission is the head of the department, and through the chief runs the department? I do think it's not too soon, and I would just respectfully suggest to the Chair of Public Safety, that we might want to have an inquiry made through your committee as to what that means. Crises tend to bring it out, but why, it's a shame we don't do it. I've thought about it before. I'm not criticizing anyone but myself. It's a shame that we wait till a crisis for us to deal with questions that have blurry areas in them. And this is a blurry area, admittedly, in the charter, and the new charter doesn't change the blur. So I would just make it as a friendly suggestion. I'd be willing to author or co-author a motion starting the process, but I do think that it is an important issue, not just in a crisis, but in a long-term basis as to what it means. And some of it comes from the discussion in the press about, should the chief have been required to tell the commission X, Y, or Z before he did it? I didn't have an answer to it when it was raised in the paper. I don't know that there is an answer to it, but I think it would be useful to have an answer to it. And I think it will take the city attorney's office, and it will take the commission, and it will take the chief and others, and the council, of course, and the mayor's office, to be able to talk about what we understand to be the role of a commission that has as its job description, the management of the police department, civilian management of the police department through a sworn officer, the chief of police. And I don't think there are correct or incorrect answers, but there is a blur now that I think is going to make this and every other step very much more difficult to resolve. This little tiff that's going on is symptomatic of not having a clear answer to that. And I think it would be useful for us to pursue that, and I will meet with the Chair after this meeting and talk about how we might want to address, begin to address that problem. And I think we should invite all the people to be involved in it that I've named, because I don't think there is a single correct answer, but I do think there needs to be some sense of what it means to have that description of the police commission and the chief.
Mrs. Chick?
Yes, I also rise in support of the motion, and would add that I'm glad to be taking a specific action, and also one that is symbolic in exactly the opposite way of the, what I would call shenanigans that have been going on are symbolic. To see top public officials, elected leaders, et cetera, not sharing information, not working together, is exactly what the public, we all serve together, does not need, does not deserve. Here, we are taking a step, the city council, in working as a team, a partner, with the police commission. And I would go even further, Councilmember Goldberg, in terms of the fuzziness, and say that it's very much my hope and expectation that as we go forward, there is going to be some very clear clarification that will need to occur, probably, in our going back to the public for changes again in the charter, that bolster up possibly further the independence of the inspector general, that take a look at what we're going to learn here. And I was pleased to see that in the commission's report, in terms of what they are going to be doing, they're going to be looking at themselves also. I think we need to get to a place, the city needs to be in a place, where what unfolds is not dependent on personalities, it's not dependent on style, it doesn't depend on who the people are who are making up a commission at a certain time, or who the mayor is, or who the chief is, but that there are certain procedures, there are certain clear responsibilities and mandates, and by the way, that there are certain, very clear, in-place vehicles or infrastructure that tie the city council and the commission together in sharing some of the responsibility that in fact we do share, and we should, because we are accountable to our constituents about what's going on in the LAPD. And I will tell you that it's my experience in the past, that the contact and the communication and the work together between the commission and the council is informal and casual at best, and I think it's something that needs to be reexamined. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, I think it should be appreciated that civilian oversight has been and is the order of the day. There's a compelling argument for it. There's a compelling argument for the division of labor between sworn and civilian, and I think it's not required of us to rehearse that. But having said that, I think it should be added that it will take much more than a resolution on the part of the police commission to restore public confidence in whether or not we are effectively getting to the bottom of the scandal with which we are currently confronted. And so I have a strong sense, and I've said it to a number of you, and I will say it repeatedly, that the police commission would be well advised to recognize its strengths as well as its limitations. And it seems to me wisdom would require that those who know what their limitations are, they then would appeal to additional help to assist them in getting to the bottom of this scandal. The Justice Department has visited the city of Los Angeles, done some interviews. I would say to all of you, we should be encouraging the police commission to take advantage of the resources of the Justice Department. Invite them to help give shape and definition to what is going on. I think the Attorney General of the United States has a critical role to play in terms of providing some leadership to the issue of what the prosecutors in this case may be, be it the US Attorney, the US, whether it be the US Attorney, whether it be the State Attorney General, whether it be the district attorney, or for that matter, the city attorney. There is a clear need for organization and leadership, and I think we should be wise enough, we should be willing enough, we should be smart enough to take advantage of resources that could help us through this crisis. Mr. President?
Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President, colleagues, the first thing I wanted to say is that mistakes are what remind us that we're humans. I think I'm being very kind when I call this a mistake on the part of Chief Parks, but I think it does remind us that we all have our frailties. And I agree with Councilmember Holden. It's not to interpret or mean that he's not doing his job, and he's not working hard. He made a tactical decision to exclude the DA. I reviewed the March 8th letter. I think it was a poor choice of decisions, but it doesn't mean that the rest of the volume of work that he's doing isn't proper or even worth support, because I do support his efforts. The police commission right now, under the charter, does have the authority to do the right thing, but that begs the question as to whether or not they will do the right thing. The calls for an independent commission, like the Christopher Commission, I have not endorsed, because although they would be more inclined to do the right thing because of the external pressure, they don't have the authority. So we have one group that has the authority, and whether or not they will do the right thing is in question. Then there's some people calling for an independent commission who would more than likely do the right thing, but with no authority, because as we know, as we know through our own history, the Christopher Commission's recommendations have not been fully implemented. So as I have told my staff, I share with you, I have seen that movie. I do not want to see the sequel. If you have some information, some variable that will change the dynamics, that will move us to the next level, where a Christopher Commission-type of organization will make a difference, I'm open to hearing it. But a repeat of histories, mistakes, is not what I want to do. So right now, I'm asking, and I'm encouraging us all, to look at the police commission, support their work, and give them the amount of funding that they need to do the right thing, because they definitely have the authority to do the right thing. So I think right now, this motion helps us by showing the community that we do support our police commission. So I do support it.
Ms. Zakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the comments and the seriousness with which my colleagues are looking at this today, without necessarily laying blame or fault, but really, very, very clearly reiterating the appropriate lines of command. I, first of all, think that Mr. Padilla was accurate in our conversation, that I did not think it was appropriate for the commission, for the council to act before the commission did, and either request or direct them. I think we need, as we talk about an independent commission, needed to let the commission act independently to come to this decision. I believe that the commission does not believe that the lines are blurred. I believe that the commission says and acted today to say that they had expected certain policies to be followed, certain policies to be handled in the manner that the policies had been written previously, and that any change in those policies needed their direction first, before any changes of policies occurred. That's what they reaffirmed, and that's what we are supporting. I also think that those lines that are drawn are appropriate to be drawn in terms of that independent ability and arms-length. But I think Mr. Ridley Thomas is absolutely right, that now is the critical time for this commission to perform, for this commission to perform and realize that it doesn't have the resources in itself, that it needs all outside assistance, capability, and that there are some very, I think, appropriate scenarios that we can consider, we can advise, we can suggest. And just as of, informing the members of the council, Monday, the Public Safety Committee is having a meeting where it will take up all of the motions that each of you have brought in relative to Rampart, relative to other directions that we should be taking and going in, and we will bring that back. Tuesday, we will have a report here from the chief on the board of inquiry. We will also have on Tuesday the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee and the Budget and Finance Committee authorizing the appropriate budgetary startup for the investigation that the commission and its staff and the inspector general need to conduct separately, unfettered, uncensored, unpreviewed, to bring back the whole range of issues, including, as Ms. Goldberg and others have indicated, what does civilian oversight really mean? Is it strong enough as it does exist? Ought we to come up with new models? These are not going to be reinventing a whole lot of things. We have been in touch with the Department of Justice and have seen what the Department of Justice has suggested as standards that are acceptable, where they have stepped in. Rather than waiting for them to step in, as they have every right to do and tell us, I think are asking them to join us and give us guidance and help give us those suggestions to be brought back, and then to have in place a permanent role of overseeing the implementations of the reforms that may be forthcoming is necessary. That need not necessarily change with every rescheduling or resetting of commission members. We need a permanent, separate organization to make sure that that does occur. But this morning, I think we are speaking with one voice to say that we are affirming policy, we are affirming the mechanisms that were set up, how they need to operate. It's very clear, and I think it's clearly not the end of this, it is just the beginning.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Ms. Zakowski's remarks are very helpful as we attempt to further define what our next steps might be. Wisdom ought to prevail here, if we are to do the right thing by the citizens, the residents of the city of Los Angeles. And I think it's going to be most important for us to recognize that a number of allegations will be made, many of which I suspect will be unsubstantiated. Assigning blame to the chief in terms of impugning his motives as to attempting to limit the scope of the investigation seems to me to be quite curious in light of the fact that all of us know it was the chief who took the lead in inviting the US Attorney to be a part of the investigation, as well as the FBI. Now, I don't know how you do both at the same time. Now, I don't know how you do both at the same time, limit the probe and broaden it. It would seem to me that there is need to clarify that. But what is missing from the equation, Members of the Council, seems to me to be some indication to the public, and this is as good a venue as any, on behalf of the District Attorney, to give us confidence that we are on course with a forceful probe into the Rampart scandal. A motion has been introduced, many of you have already signed it, and we hope that that will help bring to fore a balanced view of what is going on. If the DA is doing what we hope for him to do, which is to probe deeply, forcefully, and quickly to get to this, to the bottom of this, let him come forward and give this body and all other bodies the necessary information so that we can communicate that to our respective constituencies. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Holden.
Yeah, once again, Mr. President, we cannot, and certainly should not, micromanage high-profile cases being investigated by the Police Department. You'll never get a resolution. Now, we talked about this motion, but some people got off track to talk about other types of investigation of the Chief and of the department. Should come, maybe that should come later on. But anything that we do now interferes substantially with this investigation and may even cause some people to walk. And I don't think we all, none of us want that. Now, I have no problem with setting up some, another commission like they did after Rotten the King. It was after the trial, after all the other things that happened in this city. But we put in motion some corrective action then, and only then. Now, every police department needs a Chief of Police. Thank God we have one with 30-plus years of having served in that department and knows it from top to bottom. I think he's an honest, honorable, tough cop. Some people don't like tough cops. I don't think that the Commission are tough law enforcement officers. They are civilian, that is correct. But thank God, all of the information, all of the investigation is not put in their hands. What do you think will happen? They will micromanage investigation also, a high profile. Let's make some news, let's call a news conference. We have to be very careful about that. They were appointed to serve in those positions. The police chief has worked his way up. Department understand what law enforcement is all about. We can't say, should you attack, arrest this robber, not arrest that robber. Arrest this crook, not arrest that crook. Or bring this one to trial. We have to be very careful about what we're doing. What we're doing, fine, we're going to talk about it. But the action that we take could be second-judge and highly scrutinized, especially if you go wrong. You can't follow the newspaper front-page articles and take our action accordingly. I am not, and I would advise you to consider that is the wrong way to go also.
I move the question.
No one else wants to be heard, so we'll vote on the motion, special one. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. All right, Mr. Fuer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, you'll recall that a number of months ago, this Council unanimously passed a motion seeking the City of Los Angeles to file a lawsuit against the gun manufacturers. The City Attorney had already begun preliminary work toward precisely that end. This morning, there is an announcement of a settlement with one of the gun manufacturers. The City Attorney was just involved in a nationwide discussion, including President Clinton, on this issue. I would urge us to permit the City Attorney to briefly present to us the terms on which the City is participating in that settlement with Smith &amp; Wesson. And I also want to indicate that I'll be bringing in a motion on Tuesday that would ask the City of Los Angeles to purchase weapons for our personnel only from signatories to this important settlement agreement. Ms. Weingart regarding the findings?
Yes, thank you. The City, as you know, has this litigation against Smith &amp; Wesson at all. The settlement has just been announced, and it's an important safety, public safety issue, and it's important for the City Attorney to brief the Council on the terms of this settlement, and therefore, the Council needs to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda and that there is an immediate need to act.
Okay, prepare the roll on the findings. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
The matter is before us.
James Hahn, Mr. President, Members of the Council, a few minutes ago, the President of the United States announced an historic agreement with one of the defendant manufacturers in gun litigation lawsuits that have been brought by cities and counties across this country. That manufacturer was Smith &amp; Wesson. And following up on negotiations that have been going on for quite some time, the White House, through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, Secretary Andrew Cuomo got involved. They'd been meeting with Smith &amp; Wesson. Ed Schultz, the President of Smith &amp; Wesson, reached that agreement with the White House. We were briefed on the terms of that settlement late last night, and the settlement agreement was announced this morning. This is an historic agreement, for the first time, a gun manufacturer is accepting responsibility to make a safer product, to market that product in a way that it will be kept out of the hands of children and criminals. Some of the provisions of this agreement include that they will design all guns, Smith &amp; Wesson will design all their guns so that they cannot be readily operated by a child under the age of six. They will place external gun locks on all their guns immediately and install internal locking mechanisms within two years. All their guns will meet stringent performance tests, will be sold with clear warnings about safe storage. Smith &amp; Wesson guns will also contain chamber load indicators letting someone know whether or not there is a bullet still left in the gun. All models will also have magazine disconnect devices, which will further enhance their safety. All Smith &amp; Wesson guns will also be fingerprinted in the sense that guns will be fired. Bullets from those guns will be sent to the Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms Department so that every gun sold by Smith &amp; Wesson will be fingerprinted in the sense that we'll be able to identify any bullet that has come from any Smith &amp; Wesson gun. They have additionally committed to spend 2% of their annual sales revenue on the development of personalized gun technology, which would prevent anyone other than an authorized user from firing one of their guns. This is, again, very historic. We, in California, have much tougher laws due to leadership on this Council. We passed a one-gun-a-month law, the state of California adopted that. This settlement does not go as far as California or Los Angeles has gone, but it says that any distributor selling Smith &amp; Wesson products may only release one gun to a purchaser at that time. If more guns are desired to be purchased, multiple sales form will have to be forwarded to ATF, and not until 14 days later will any additional weapons be able to be picked up. There are many other provisions here, but we are very much satisfied with this settlement. This is what we were looking for, as we told this Council when we came before you earlier. This lawsuit was not about money. This was about changing the way this product is made and changing the way an industry does business. We are happy to reach this settlement with Smith &amp; Wesson. We will be dismissing them as a defendant in the lawsuit. We will carry forward with our lawsuit against all the other manufacturers. We have made it very clear to them that this is the floor of any agreement, and this is the minimum that we will accept, and we will be seeking to get more through continuing this litigation. And I appreciate the leadership of this Council in allowing us to go forward with that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hahn. That's the report, and we appreciate it, and so there's no action as needed.
Can we ask some questions, or? All right, I'll bring in a motion.
Okay. Mr., we have item number 17 now. Thank you, Mr. Hahn. Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, Mr. President, I think a representative from the Police Department is present. Members of the Council, this is dealing with official police garages, and many of us have had comments about it and this RFP. And my understanding was the purpose of the RFP was to create an atmosphere where you could have competition for the OPG garages. Now, that was one issue. A second issue that I brought up was that in certain parts of the city, primarily in the inner city, you have an overabundance of storage facilities. And basically, the Department had a policy, reach official police garage has to have their primary location in the division it services. Now, if you look at the report, what I want you to know is that we are treating every division differently. And the reason that's happening is it's according to what exists now. So what you have before you is an RFP that is recommending any future competitors use what they have now. Now, what that means is the Pacific Division, for example, has no secondary lot. It is not recommended that there be a secondary lot, that it all be at a primary center. Now, in the case that I've been asking the question, Northeast Los Angeles, you need to understand that the primary is allowed to have a one-acre primary location and a three-acre auxiliary location outside of the division in which it's servicing. And what that does is along my river corridors, it's allowed an OPG to open up a facility that basically has contributed, from my perspective, to some of the crime element for some of the children who have to cross a bridge. And we've been trying to get this OPG to move its location for the last four or five years. Initially, when they got the RFP, they were all within one division, so it wasn't a question we were asking. But when they were able to move the auxiliary lot, and that's their primary facility from my perspective, because that's where they stored most of their vehicles, it's three acres, the bottom line is it created a problem for us. The Police Department's going to argue what the zoning allows for it. I'm going to argue that this RFP does not have to allow for it. Now, I wanted to bring it to your attention, because what we have before us is an RFP that is being proposed to be released, that basically is favoring, clearly establishing a favorite position for all those current OPGs. Now, my real problem is with one in particular. Now, if I can say in the Pacific Division, you don't have to have an auxiliary lot, I can say that for Northeast. That is my position. And so, I'd like to be able to move that we change the RFP in regards to its recommendations for the Northeast Division to require that its auxiliary lot be within the Northeast Division boundaries. And that's what I'm requesting. If I could have a second, that's all it would take, and then this could be released.
All right. Do we want to get a report?
Sure.
We invited the place to.
I don't have a problem. I just wanted to explain it the way I see it, and you can get a report on that and then go from there.
You want to make an addition?
Well, I'm Detective Carson. I've been assigned to the contract issue with the OPGs. Our intent in the RFP was to give some type of guideline to the people who are proposing in these areas regarding how much area or how much space they would need to store these vehicles. It wasn't our intent to say that you have to have a secondary lot or a satellite lot in any area. We currently have OPGs that are storing upwards and above 600 vehicles. Our problem is that they're only allowed to store these vehicles in areas that are properly zoned. Much of that commercial zoning is in Council District One, and I understand the Council person's concern with those areas. We didn't intentionally make all of these generic. It happens to be that all of these bids are due by mid-2000, and we're trying to get all of these RFPs out so that we can continue with the bid process.
Okay. Ms. Goldberg?
Yes, I just wanted to rise in support of this amendment, but I want to get these out on the street too, because we really want to get this done. It's been lagging much too long, and people have been calling, I don't know about everybody else, but my office saying, "Well," and "well." So I'm wondering if this change can be made quickly, this one alteration to the RFP that affects just Northeast? And if it can't, can we just hold out Northeast and get the others out on the street?
If that would be possible. If we have an issue with Northeast, I'd much prefer that we go on with the rest and deal with.
Okay. Because I second it, I want it to be looked at, but if they can't do it right here, right now, maybe we can send it to committee to get that done and send the rest out on the street. So that would be my recommendation.
That's fine.
Ms. Zakowski.
Thank you. I have no problem with that. I thank Mr. Hernandez for bringing this up. I wish it had been brought up in committee, because I think the issue is a valid one. And I guess the only thing I want is a reassurance from the staff that these differentials, which are pointed out by Mr. Hernandez for each division, with each division having, that we didn't standardize it. And either we should have standardized it, or there should be a reason why they're differentiated. And if the differential is that's what exists today, then it clearly gives a preference of sorts to those who will bid, because they have it today. And if we use that as the standard, then it's going to create an inherent problem as we get bids in. So is there any way in going along with Mr. Hernandez's motion to take Northeast out, that we also have a recognition that these are just general recommendations, not necessary standards that need to be met by each division, by each bidder? And that if bidders come in with alternatives that will achieve the goal of storing the vehicles that are necessary, consistent with all appropriate land use, consistent with adjacency or nearness of satellite, it's our secondary sites to primary, so that we, as we together, you in the first looking at them and rating them, and then the Council, has some degree of assurance that not everybody has a secondary site of a large nature in certain areas of city concentrated? If that's what is the end result of this, then we will have failed. And I think that we had intended to create this RFP, and I'd been told all along that the RFP is one to create open bidding for the first time in 50, 60 years, and two, that there really was going to be fairness of availability. And I know that Commissioner Bachmann, in fact, got involved in this, in looking at fairness on how you give credibility to business side of it, how they're run, et cetera. And I appreciate that, but I don't want this to slip through the loophole, that it is creating a preference in intent, or a preference just by the way it's set up. And if I can have assurance from the staff that that's not the case, that it will be looked at openly in terms of all of these secondary satellites, and include Mr. Hernandez's motion, just on the question of Northeast right now, so that one is perfectly clear. Can we just have the staff respond to that?
As I stated, it wasn't our intent to specify that these individual OPGs had to have specific amounts of space in specific areas. Our intent was that you need enough space to allow for the storage of this many vehicles. So yes, we can change that, that's not a problem at all. We do have to have the primary facility within the geographic area, though, that remains.
We have Mr. Hernandez's motion, amendment, and there's no objections to that, so we have 17 ayes amended.
Yeah, and my understanding of the amendment, though, is that Northeast, the Northeast recommendation would be that the auxiliary be within the division, no different specifics.
You understand that?
The storage area would be contained within Northeast area.
All right. Northeast Division.
Okay, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That's 17 ayes amended. Next item.
Now it's time for public comment on non-agenda items.
Okay, we have Myron Harper wants to be heard.
Mr. President, Councilmembers, that's Myrna, not Myron. It seems that everywhere you look nowadays, there is negative PR regarding the LAPD and its unnecessary violence and brutality. its unnecessary violence and brutality. I would like these people, to ask these people if they have ever had to go to some rat or cockroach-infested cellar or abandoned house to claim their daughter or son who was throwing up and near death on a urine-soaked mattress due to a drug overdose. I had to wonder what had happened to a kindergartner who had been kidnapped on the way home from school to spend their lives as sex and torture toys. Muggings, rapes, purse snatchings, murders, these things and worse were happening every minute of every day in every city, but not so prevalent as they once were in Los Angeles. There was a time when there was a great hue and cry from the general population as to when the LAPD was going to put an end to all the crime and violence in the city. Well, they have. What did the civilian population think the LAPD would use to quell the crime rage? Counseling sessions and paddling boards? The reality was that unfortunately, the police department didn't have a David to overpower, overpower this giant brotherhood of crime consisting of murder, drugs, and corruption that held the city enthralled. The LAPD are today waging a no-holds-barred battle against a criminal faction that has no conscience or principles. Even resorting to fighting fire with fire, the LAPD comes up short in the equipment department. The criminals supply themselves with much more sophisticated firepower and equipment than that used by the LAPD. Witness any given video of a shootout between the LAPD and criminals, these same videos sometimes display an arsenal that would make the United Nations envious. And what does the LAPD come up with? Stun guns. Even with that, there is still outrage from some facet of society about unnecessary violence. Let's get real and put the blame where it really belongs, on the dishonest-minded people who want to freely cruise the streets for infernal purposes and are of the mind that the cover of darkness will hide their nefarious schemes. If you are afraid of police brutality, then stay home at night. If you have to go out, then don't do anything of a suspicious nature. Don't drink and drive. Don't use drugs or put a firearm on display. If a policeman tells you to raise your hands, raise them. Don't make sudden moves. Obey instructions. Don't reach for anything. The policeman knows his job, and he's just doing it, and in the safest manner possible for all concerned. How many times over the last 20 years have we mourned along with the family and loved ones of one of our law enforcement community that was killed in the line of duty? Whether it was because of a momentary hesitation on his part to fire due to respect for human life, we'll never know. That was then, this is now. I just know that the sad dirge of bagpipes playing "Amazing Grace" isn't heard so frequently anymore. Punishment is a deterrent. The word is out, we got a bigger giant. It is a dirty, dirty job that nobody else wants to do, but it is a job that is being done and done well by men and women who, for the love of the game, are seldom absent or late for their assigned duty. Is there another occupation where the stress and ravages of the vocation takes such merciless toll on the private lives of its coherence? They have to love it to withstand the pressure of being a target forever sociopathic misfit with a mission, or just return to the thankless and incredible stress attached to each day. This is the 21st century. The world's not the same as it was 20 years ago. What an American citizen could sometimes do as a prank 20 years ago could today be misconstrued as a threat to society. The crimes of today are what we understood 20 years ago to be the crimes of the future. This is the future. Our police force tactics have been upgraded as a consequence. Our policemen are soldiers in this new world, pitted against the most indescribable, inhuman, consciousless faction imaginable. Let them alone. Let them do their job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Harper. They, that's all the cards we have, so the public comment period is closed. Anything else before the council?
Provisions for posting and referral.
There's no objections, unanimous vote.
Councilmember requests for her excuse in council. Councilmember Goldberg requests to be excused on Tuesday, March 21st for personal business as meets policy.
Unanimous vote.
The dust is clear.
Okay, we have adjourned motion, so would everyone please stand? I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Amy Elizabeth Cornwell, who passed away. She was the daughter of the Wilshire community leader, Mike Cornwell. She was attending Prescott College in Arizona where she was living. She was working with departmental disability kids. She leaves her parents, a sister, and one niece. I'd ask that we adjourn in her memory. Ms...
Yes, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Mrs. Samantha DeGroot, who was known by her friends and family as Sammy. She passed away last Wednesday of complications of cancer and was a very close family friend of my district director's, Juan Rodriguez. She served as a member of my CRA Community Advisory Committee until just recently and was a longtime resident of the San Fernando Valley. She is survived by her five children and grandchildren.
Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. Requested the council adjourn in memory of Eugene Arthur Longoria. He was the husband of one of our city commissioners, Mary Louise Longoria, from the Department of Neighborhoods.
All members.
And he was also a teacher within the Los Angeles Unified School District for 42 years. He passed away on March 4th of this year.
All members. Mr. Wax.
Yes, first, I'd like to be co-presenter on Amy Cornwell. Both her, both her parents, Mike and Diane, were friends of mine at UCLA and have been good friends for a long time, and it's a sad loss. Also, I'd like the council to adjourn in memory of Anita Sebo, who's the mother of Kevin Sebo, whom many of us know and is now Assistant Chief Deputy to Supervisor Yaroslavsky. And she leaves her husband and five children, and I'll give the pertinent, Kirk, the pertinent information. And also, I was not here at the end of the council on Wednesday, Mr. President. Did we adjourn in memory of Manny Post?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I would like officially to add my name to that. He was a dear and close friend for many, many years, and just recently sent me the maximum contribution in my raise, and I think that was one of the last things, and I was very grateful for him.
Call the... Mrs. Walters.
I'd like to ask the council to adjourn in memory of Mac Robinson. He was the brother to Jackie Robinson. He passed away earlier this week. He, his accomplishments in history with respect to the Olympics sort of get lost in light of his brother's accomplishments, but he came in, he won a silver medal at the 36 Olympics, came in just, I think, two seconds or so after Jesse Owens in that, what was it?
I think, I think it's two tenths of a second.
Two tenths, okay. All right. Thank you. See, you see what my knowledge of the sports world is. But he worked for kids in Pasadena all of his life. He was an employee of the city, and very often, he had very menial jobs to keep his family together. But despite his menial jobs, he always found time to work with kids in the neighborhood and to encourage them to participate in sports and stay in school.
Yeah, let's hear all members on that. Call the roll. Hi, the council is adjourned.